Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business will be roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Mosley, Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council; profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Silver. A concern of this council, as I indicated this morning, is public comment for communicating the best information available at the highest level of intelligence to correct misinformation and also to combat disinformation. The existence of local public comment in this city and across the United States is, in my view, the most democratic way for us as citizens to directly deal with and talk to, criticize, compliment our government. This is not true at the state level or the national level, and I would like that to change. So, public comment, in my view, should exist in a U.S.-American, Ken, Asian, Nihongo, state, House, EIA, representatives, meeting, shukai, in all 50 U.S.-American states, once weekly, on Friday, 2:00 to 5:30 p.m., in all state Assembly houses. In Pennsylvania, that would mean that 67 county citizens would come to do public comment and have three minutes between 2:00 and 5:30 on a Friday, and be chosen by lottery, each having, again, three minutes to speak directly to the House. At the national level, third version here, I think that public comment should exist in a U.S.-American Camara, Deputes Espanol, House of Representatives, meeting, es junta, by a citizen from each U.S.-American state. That would mean that, weekly, there would be 50 people, one from each state of the United States, who would be able to come to the building of the House of Representatives and express themselves for at least three minutes, and they would also be chosen within the framework of their states by lottery, and speak again directly to the House. Now, on this issue of vote-by-voter verification, for whom, I think that it is ludicrous that this council and across the United States, there's resistance to this, even though the claim that I make that you can't check your vote is not denied.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jacob Evangelista.
Good afternoon, council members. I am Jacob Evangelista, and I am the Vice President of Complete Streets at Pitt. I am a resident of Squirrel Hill South, and I'm here today to testify in favor of automatic red light enforcement cameras. As a cyclist who commutes daily in our city, my personal experience of sharing the road with motor vehicles has made me acutely aware of our unique vulnerabilities as cyclists. The tragic loss of multiple cyclists in Pittsburgh and across Allegheny County just this past week underscores the urgent need for safer streets. Growing up in Massachusetts, I saw firsthand the effects of ARL-E due to the enactment of the technology that has a proven track record of improving compliance with traffic signals and, by extension, enhancing safety for all road users. Drivers in Massachusetts are far less likely to run a red light due to this. As a resident of Squirrel Hill, I cross Beacon Street often. This intersection would particularly benefit from ARL-E. I have noticed that people often run the red light or take right on red despite no turn on red signs. I have also had many close calls myself at that intersection in just this past month. As an advocate, I have been involved in three separate vigils, remembering vulnerable road users that have died on city streets, including one recent one yesterday in Homewood remembering Courtney Carter. To prevent future traffic deaths like Courtney's, we must take policy action. Adopting ARL-E here in Pittsburgh would not only make our streets safer, but also bring us one step closer to realizing the goal of Vision Zero policy, zero traffic fatalities in the city of Pittsburgh. In my belief and the belief of Complete Streets at Pitt, ARL-E is a critical tool in achieving that vision. I urge you to consider this critical measure as a part of our collective effort to make Pittsburgh a safer, welcoming, accessible, and livable city for all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Marion Kaelin.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Marion Kaelin, and I'm the Community Engagement Chair of Complete Streets at Pitt. I also serve as the Constituent Services Liaison for Councilperson Charland's office. I'm a resident of the Oak Cliff community in South Oakland, and I'm here today to testify in favor of automatic red light enforcement as a pedestrian and cyclist. Due to South and Central Oakland's proximity to Pitt's campus and the limited affordable housing options provided by and immediately surrounding the university, the Oakland neighborhoods foster thousands of student residences each year. This area is on track to keep compounding in density, and as the student population spreads and grows, so does the need for traffic calming measures. Given that most students living in Central and South Oakland may be anywhere from a 15- to 35-minute walk from the center of campus, and driving and parking in the area is no easy feat, biking and walking are critical transportation methods. Unfortunately, neither are safe. Oak Cliff, in particular, hosts a significant senior population who are especially at risk of traffic injuries. South Oakland is a food desert and does not have PRT access, which forces residents to brave dangerous traffic in order to access basic resources, especially if they do not own a vehicle. In particular, numerous intersections along both Bates Street and the Boulevard of the Allies have become hotspots for speeding and red light running. Dangerous crossings by pedestrians are also common, as our streets lack common sense infrastructure that has residents in mind, such as speed bumps, crosswalks, walkways, and high-traffic areas, and quality sidewalks. These issues are coupled with the inconsistent implementation of bike lanes that would welcome cycling as an alternative to driving. As Jacob mentioned, vigils and remembrances have become a devastatingly regular component of our organization. Last year, my peers and I at Complete Streets revived a ghost bike memorial for Ri-Hu-Lin, a cyclist struck and killed at the intersection of Louisa and Myron in Central Oakland, an intersection where there are still disintegrating sidewalks, ineffective signage, and poor visibility, continuing to make tragedies like this plausible. The implementation of automatic red light enforcement is a key method of traffic control that would greatly benefit this area, by posting signage warning of ARL-E and its consequences, and allowing law enforcement to easily pinpoint reckless driving. Bad driving habits can be addressed before they cause harm. Committing to properly enforcing traffic charges shows students like me that the city is looking out for their safety and the safety of their neighbors, roommates, friends. As Oakland's Bike-Ped Organization, my peers at Complete Streets and I stress that ARL-E technology be approved for Pittsburgh. Thank you, council members, for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Eric Borer.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Borer. I live in Lawrenceville. I'm also the advocacy director of Bike Pittsburgh. We're a 3,000-plus-member bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization working to make our streets safer here in the greater Pittsburgh metro area. I'm here to express our support for the automated red light camera bill. On average, about 120 Pittsburghers are seriously injured while another 20 are killed on our roadways each year. About a third of these victims are pedestrians. The new legislation to bring red light cameras to Pittsburgh, combined with Mayor Ganey's Vision Zero commitment to eliminate traffic fatalities, shows that the city is taking the national epidemic of traffic fatalities seriously. Automated enforcement has the potential to reduce dangerous driving, has been successfully implemented in cities across the country, including here in Pennsylvania, to positive results and lives saved. Overall, red light cameras have demonstrated a net decrease in red light running, resulting in fewer total crashes and injuries. Reducing the over 4,000 reported crashes a year in Pittsburgh will also yield a monetary, as well as time savings, for first responders and public safety, so that they can spend their valuable time elsewhere. Dangerous drivers do need to be held responsible for the risks they pose to our neighbors, and automated enforcement is a proven method to do so in a safe and unbiased way while removing armed enforcement from the equation. Pennsylvania law requires all red light camera proceeds to be sent to the state, who then redistributes the money to the municipalities, who must use it on road safety improvements. There is something poetic about using funds gathered from people who are making our streets more dangerous and putting it toward making our streets safer. Here in Pittsburgh, the lives lost and turned upside down from traffic violence depend on it, so we encourage you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joe Nurr.
My name is Joe Nury. I live in Shadyside, and I would like to speak today in favor of the proposed automated red light enforcement program. I'm a father, a husband. My family shops at the Target in East Liberty. Our son attends daycare in Highland Park. We volunteer with a church in Point Breeze. Our life takes place in the East End. My wife and I relocated to Pittsburgh three years ago, just before our son was born. We didn't know anything about the city, but we chose to move to Shadyside due to its apparent walkability. We try to walk just about everywhere in our daily life. Compared to driving, it's healthier, it reduces pollution, and it saves us money. We have a car, but we really only use it for long road trips. On a typical day, each of us walks about four miles through Pittsburgh's East End, frequently with our two-year-old son. Unfortunately, what immediately became clear to us when we moved, and what is still very clear, is that while you can walk places in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh is not a walking city. It's not a cycling city or a bus city either. It's a car city. Have you ever stepped into a crosswalk with your baby in a stroller, with the "walk" sign granting you the right of way, only to have the car lay on the horn and blaze through a red light within feet of you? If you haven't, I wish you never do. And if you have, I hope the driver didn't then extend the middle finger or scream something through their window as they continued on your way, leaving you shaking in the street trying to make sense of what just happened. I wish I could say this was an isolated incident, but it's happened independently to my wife and me numerous times over the past three years. In fact, it's about once a week that we have or witness an adverse interaction with a vehicle, including most surprisingly branded City of Pittsburgh vehicles. I would hope that if anyone is driving conservatively, it would be city vehicles, but even this is not always the case. But simply, there seems to be very little reason for drivers to yield to pedestrians, obey red lights, or assume anything other than complete right-of-way today. Just watching the average intersection in Shadyside at rush hour, you will see a lot of people run red lights, probably just about every time the light turns red. And why wouldn't you? We're all busy, and there really don't seem to be any adverse consequences today. As a matter of safety, my family now counts to five after a light turns green before we attempt to start crossing an intersection. Luckily, this has limited the number of times we've had issues with people running red lights, but it has introduced a new challenge with people making right turns. And more broadly, it's kind of ridiculous that we can't just count on the traffic light, which is supposed to communicate legally binding instructions to everyone at the intersection to help keep us safe. The automated red light enforcement program presents a relatively simple and effective way to stem the tide. If there's a chance of getting a ticket, there will be a lot less people running red lights, and that will make safer streets for everyone, drivers and pedestrians. In conclusion, on behalf of my family and everyone in the East End, I implore you to authorize the automated red light enforcement program. There's a lot of work to be done. If Pittsburgh is to become more of a walking city, then the program is a strong step in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Madeline McGrady.
Good afternoon, council. Maddie McGrady. I'm a social worker and program manager with the Human Rights City Alliance and also renter in Highland Park. I'm here today just to speak on some concerns I have about Councilmember Charland and Councilmember Strasburger's proposed Quality of Life supplement to the Pittsburgh Code. Councilman Charland, I saw you stated that the intent of the bill is not to punish struggling residents and is focused on keeping the city clean through voluntary compliance, and I really appreciate that. But I think intentions don't always translate into impact, and I am sincerely concerned that this proposed ordinance can and will harm residents that are struggling. So I just urge you to think about folks who are living in poverty, immigrants and refugees, especially those who may not speak English, people with intellectual or physical disabilities, seniors, people experiencing addiction or mental health conditions, youth aging out of foster care, unhoused folks, and other marginalized members of our communities who are more likely to face barriers to understanding and thus complying with our rules and regulations. So without addressing the barriers to compliance, and there are many, but for example, one would be a lack of accessible information in languages other than English, I feel that this ordinance sets up our most vulnerable neighbors to be fined and potentially, and this is a question I think that needs to be clarified, is would there be the potential for people to become ensnared in court proceedings if they were not to pay their fines? That can be costly, not just in terms of the money, but in wages lost if someone, a single mother, for example, has to take time off of work to seek support, to understand a ticket, how to pay it, or to demonstrate to a judge that they are unable to pay. So just speaking to urge you to consider these, you know, potential pitfalls as you think about how we can address some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Noe.
My name is Daniel Noe, and I'm a parent resident of Squirrel Hill. I come and speak in support of the automated red light enforcement, and I want to tell you a story about last week, which was the first week of walking our kids to school down a three-quarter-mile stretch of Wilkins Avenue. The first traffic light we passed, a commercial vehicle operated by the company Medspeed ran the red light at Wilkins and Whiteman. In the afternoon, Shady and Wilkins, again, walking out to pick them up. Vehicle drove inbound in Wilkins through the red light. Day two, morning, Wilkins and Negley. There's a Jeep behind a car making a turn. The light turned red. The Jeep is behind the stop line. Car made their turn. The Jeep just accelerated from a complete stop through the red light, running the red light right through, making a turn. Day three, morning, car ran the red light going down Beachwood Ave. Another car, walking back. They ran the red light, Wilkins and Whiteman. I was pulling in my trash bins. Wednesday morning, it's trash morning. I hear a car accelerating down Wilkins Ave, flooring it. They ran the red light, Wilkins and Beeler, 40 miles an hour. Day four, car turning left from Wilkins from Shady. They entered the intersection after the light turned red. They stopped, confused, as cars started driving through the intersection the other way because they didn't have the right of way. They somehow drove through. I don't even know. This is with my kids. Kids ask, "Why don't these drivers follow the rules?" "There are no consequences." "Did I see any police or enforcement on that three-quarter-mile stretch of Wilkins Avenue?" "No." "Do I blame them?" "No. Their hands are full. They're busy with many things in this city." And you can't have police out there on that one stretch of road every day. There's a technological solution to this. It's pretty much the only way that these people are ever going to suffer consequences for running red lights. One of these was in a company vehicle. How many times does that person run a red light like that in their workday? And again, they are not even finding out that they do it. They just think it's okay. So let's embrace the technological solution. It's a way of increasing the productivity of our law enforcement to show that maybe there are some consequences for this. We should support that technological solution because I think it can really help safety in our city.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Hello. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Hello, council members. Thank you for taking the time to hear my testimony today. My name is Emily Sawyer. I'm a resident of Manchester. I moved here two years ago after six years in Austin, grew up in Forest Hills, and I started picking up trash at my kids' elementary school almost immediately after moving back in 2022 because, well, it seems like no one else is going to do it. And ever since, I have been really just quite horrified by the amount of trash that's strewn across this city. I've brought it up in meetings with city officials, including at a recent budget meeting here on the North Side. I suggested that the city hire more people to pick up trash, and yet here we are with a solution that doesn't solve the trash problem but does criminalize people for not being able to meet the expectations. I think these ordinances assume that most trash comes from private residences, not quote-unquote "following code." When the more likely culprits are chronic litterers and dumpers, who would be unlikely to be caught by these new stricter ordinances and enforcement. Not to mention that the city itself is one of the worst offenders here. You can see, I sent my comments to the address, and I attached photos that I encounter in my walking during the days in the city of the trash cans. The city is doing a lot of this, and I imagine you're not going to find yourselves. How will we find chronic dumpers to deliver tickets? It's not like they're leaving their business cards in the piles of trash that they're leaving around. Solutions like the proposed ordinances are likely to impact folks who are actually trying, rather than folks who take advantage of the system. For example, older folks or folks with disabilities who may not be able to wait until after 6:00 p.m. to put out their trash. In winter, it's dark. Before then, or someone with a disability may need help moving a bulk item out, and that can only be done when that help is available, and that might mean that that item sits at the curb longer than it's supposed to. I don't think these are the people that we mean to blame our trash problem on and then also criminalize for. Would writing tickets to these people and dragging them to the magistrate actually be an effective way to solve the litter and trash problem in this city? I truly believe that it would not. Requiring and providing trash cans would be a much better idea instead of making residents buy their own. You give us a recycling bin, give people trash cans. A lot of cities already do that. The city can empty its own trash cans again. That would be a great start. Instead of paying someone to give tickets and dealing with all this time in court and all these unintended consequences, why not just focus our time and our money on picking up trash? We all want everyone to care enough about our city not to litter, but why don't we start with ourselves? The city can pay folks to pick up trash, create teams like the one that exists downtown.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to send the remainder of your testimony in writing, if you haven't already. Our next speaker is David Bringen.
This is Dave Bringen. I'm the Executive Director at Lawrenceville United, located in Lawrenceville. Thank you so much to council for passing funding to move us significantly closer towards a right to counsel in the city of Pittsburgh this morning. Really exciting day for Pittsburgh. Just wanted to say a couple words about the Quality of Life ticketing legislation. First of all, you know, LU has a long history of being involved in cleanups. We believe very strongly that everybody has a right to a clean and litter-free community. We've probably organized hundreds of cleanups during our time as an organization. We're proudly going to be represented in the Garbage Olympics this month with three different teams. So, you know, all that just to say that this is a very real issue that I think that this legislation is trying to solve for. Trash does create, you know, real, not just quality of life issues, but actually, like, health concerns too. We've seen issues where unaddressed, you know, litter and trash has led to problems with rats. It can really impact, you know, every day residents' quality of life. We have another woman in the neighborhood who's unable to, like, open her windows during really hot days because of a trash issue that was next door to her. So all that just to say that, you know, I think this is a real issue that we should be grappling with. I really appreciate the enforcement is a real issue around the existing rules. So just want to, you know, speak to that I think there's a real problem here. I do think, however, that, you know, good friends at Casa San Jose have made us a lot more aware of some of the concerns, particularly for the immigrant population and non-native English speakers. I think those concerns are extremely valid, and, you know, I would just really encourage council to take the time to meet with partners at Casa San Jose and other organizations to try to rectify those concerns and make sure that, you know, as we're addressing issues like litter and trash, that we're making sure that we're not creating disparate harm to vulnerable communities. We've certainly seen that in Lawrenceville, where even, you know, good enforcement policies get abused by bad actors and weaponized against our most vulnerable residents. So I think this is a real concern, and I just encourage council to work through those issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our final registered speaker is Bethany Cameron.
My name is Bethany Cameron, and I live in Overbrook. I'm here today to speak in support of the bill to implement automated red light enforcement in the city of Pittsburgh. I know a lot of faces in this room, and it's a joy to be back. Hi. I'm here today on behalf of my organization, Mobilify. We work to ensure freedom of movement and a guarantee of safety for all, and this bill will literally save lives. First, thanks so much to Councilperson Strasburger and Warwick for introducing this bill, bringing it to the city, and thank you to Mayor Ed Ganey for committing Pittsburgh to Vision Zero to reduce fatalities and serious injuries on our roadways. The oversight of this bill from the people checking the fines, the state oversight of this program ensures accountability. You know, site approval, posting warnings to a standard fee structure, and all of those funds contribute to the safety of all Pennsylvanians walking and biking in the future. My colleague and Mobilify's founder was gravely injured in a crash this past April. Chris Sandvig spoke at the press conference that Councilperson Strasburger held when she introduced this bill. I watched that press conference, and something really stood out to me. Public Safety Director Schmidt said that his department hopes to collect $0 from this program. Because this isn't about collecting a fee or amassing some pot of money somewhere in the state, this is about keeping people alive, because no one should be facing death or serious injury because somebody else blew a red light. And I'm sure that we all endeavor to follow the rules of the road, and I'm sure that we're all very much humans, and we get distracted. We look down at the wrong instant. This program, again, will save lives, but it also reminds the rest of us to be more aware on the roads, to pay more attention to our surroundings, and that is a shift in our culture that we badly need. Oh, and how do you avoid getting a red light ticket? Stop at the red light. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium? Any further speakers?
My name is Laura Perkins. I'm a resident of Friendship in the East End, and I work at Casa San Jose as the human rights organizer. Casa San Jose is a community organization whose vision is a Pittsburgh region that celebrates Latino culture, welcomes immigrants, and embraces inclusion, dignity, and respect. The proposed Quality of Life program, we don't think that that makes Pittsburgh a city that embraces our immigrants, and we are very concerned about the proposal's impact on Black and Brown, potential impact on Black and Brown communities. I think that Maddie said it best when Maddie distinguished the difference between intent and impact, and I think Dave spoke to that the intent is good, right? We don't want trash everywhere, but I'm worried, significantly worried, especially on behalf But I'm worried, significantly worried, especially on behalf of the people that I work with, who are recently arrived immigrants to Pittsburgh, on the impact on their lives. We believe that there are significant equity concerns and that there's not enough data, or we haven't seen enough data at least, showing the benefit of this program and that this policy could be implemented equitably. So, we're worried that Black and Brown communities will be specifically targeted, that racist neighbors might use this program to target their immigrant neighbors and their Black and Brown neighbors. Specifically, we looked at the Erie program, and it was only 50% compliance. And so, again, intent versus impact. If we want people to stop putting out their trash wrong, but there's only 50% compliance, then is that actually going to accomplish what we want? Additionally, we were told that it's only, I forget if it's $25 or $35 at the beginning, I apologize, but a small amount. But then the Erie program actually ended up having to raise that amount to $100 because they said that it wasn't having an impact that they wanted. So, if we want people to stop putting out trash incorrectly, but then it's not working in other cities, is this the right solution? And we're hoping that we don't want a program that doesn't further trends of targeting and criminalizing Black and Brown communities. I've spoken with a lot of the community that we work with, and they tell me that when they arrive to Pittsburgh, trash is honestly one of the last things that they understand. I brought these with me. They're in Spanish, which we're super excited about, but it's still confusing. And we think that there are a lot of things that can be done to really get the word out and educate instead of punish. So, the carrot versus the stick, right? Our immigrant population is growing in Pittsburgh, and we're super happy, and I think it's making Pittsburgh stronger. But we think that this Quality of Life program will hurt our immigrant community instead of the intention of the program, which is to keep Pittsburgh a cleaner city. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our standing committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee. I chair.
Deemed papers, Bill 705, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article V Discrimination, Chapter 651, findings and policy, and Chapter 659 unlawful practices to make medical marijuana patients a protected class and restrict discrimination against them.
Do we have a motion?
So, I'd like to...
Motion to approve with discussion.
Yeah, motion to approve with discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, I just want to, hang on a minute. Screen being shared? Is my screen being shared?
I don't see it.
I just request to share. Sorry, forgive me, folks. Give me a second. That's what I want. Alrighty. Thank you, everyone. I know there are lots of really interesting bills on the table today. I know this is not what folks here came to hear about, but I'm happy to have so many friends in the audience. So, I just want to talk a little bit about the bill that I've introduced to protect medical marijuana patients against employment discrimination. Let me see if I can maximize this. Alrighty. I have actually handouts if members want a paper copy. I have those if you like. Here. Yeah, thanks. Okay, so, this is the ordinance. All right. So, why this bill? So, why are we introducing this bill? My district is District 5. It includes the Hazelwood Green. That is one of the largest brownfield development sites in the region, and it is the source of hundreds of, it will be the source of hundreds of construction jobs over the next 10 to 20 years. Local community groups in Hazelwood have cited drug testing for marijuana as a barrier to qualifying for various apprenticeship programs and job placement programs that would ultimately allow residents from Hazelwood to access those construction jobs. Previous efforts to recruit locally for those programs resulted in more than half of interested candidates declining to even sign up because of marijuana testing. There are other examples of well-paid families sustaining construction jobs throughout the city. We have Bakery Square expansion in Larimer, Live Nation Concert Venue, and New Bedford Dwellings in the Hill. We have major projects in Oakland for offices, universities, retail space, and housing, and hopefully conversion projects to create more housing and revitalize downtown. So, as a council, I feel that we need to be doing everything we can to maximize the benefit of those new developments to residents, and that means putting job creation, right, at the top of the list. And while we know that recreational marijuana is not legal in Pennsylvania, Pittsburghers can legally use medical marijuana to treat a health condition, and they should not be barred from employment because of it. So, just very briefly, what is medical marijuana? The Pennsylvania Department of Health oversees the state's medical marijuana program, which provides access to medical marijuana for patients with a serious medical condition. And there is a long list for these conditions, including cancer management and remission therapy, epilepsy, inflammatory bowel disease, Huntington's disease, anxiety disorders, seizures, opioid use disorder, post-traumatic stress disorder, and severe chronic or intractable pain. So, what is the law in Pennsylvania? The Pennsylvania Medical Marijuana Act passed in 2016 legalizes the use of medical marijuana in the state. The law prohibits discrimination in employment on the basis of an employee's status as a medical marijuana patient. Pennsylvania law also allows municipalities to further define what constitutes employment discrimination and the recourse for employees facing employment discrimination. Pennsylvania law includes, the Marijuana Act includes, specific prohibitions on tasks from which employees can be barred if their blood levels are 10 nanograms per milliliter or higher for THC. And the law, the Pennsylvania law specifies that employers can bar workers from performing specific tasks that they deem life-threatening while under the influence of medical marijuana. I do want to underscore that this local legislation that we're proposing replicates these prohibitions in the state law verbatim. So, what does the legislation on the table do? The proposed Pittsburgh Medical Marijuana Ordinance specifies that in the city of Pittsburgh, drug testing medical marijuana patients for marijuana as a condition for hiring and retaining employment is discriminatory. It gives the responsibility of enforcement and investigation of discrimination claims to the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. In other words, that means that if you are experiencing this discrimination, you do not have to find your own lawyer, et cetera. You can just report it to the commission. The law also allows testing for positions requiring a firearm, per the Pennsylvania Medical Marijuana Ordinance, and it allows testing for any position subject to drug testing under the U.S. Department of Transportation or PENDOT regulations, again, per the Pennsylvania ordinance. So, usually that is going to mean people, folks who need a CDL license for the job. The bill also, in addition, allows testing of medical marijuana patients for suspected impairment at work. So, if you appear under the influence, you can be tested, and it allows testing of medical marijuana patients after a workplace accident. What does this legislation not do? This legislation does not require employers to allow medical marijuana use in the workplace. It does not require employers to allow medical marijuana patients to be under the influence in the workplace. It does not exempt medical marijuana patients from drug testing for substances beyond marijuana, and it also does not carve out industry-specific exemptions that would allow some employers to discriminate against patients but not others. So, where in Pittsburgh are medical marijuana patients safely working today? The city of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County are Pittsburgh firefighters, are Pittsburgh EMTs and paramedics, multiple local hospitals and healthcare organizations, property service providers, food service and hospitality providers, theater, concert venue, and related equipment and construction shops, primary, K-38, and high schools, universities, and research facilities, and many more. So, those are the folks, those are the workplaces that are already, you know, without this ordinance, doing the right thing by medical marijuana patients. There's just some folks, various labor organizations and workforce development organizations and community organizations and medical, oh, and wellness and outreach organizations that are supportive of this legislation. Now, there is lots of concern around this bill in the construction industry, so I want to address that specifically. Why are medical marijuana protections important for construction workers? There is a health and wellness crisis in the construction industry. According to the CDC and the Center for Construction Research and Training, quote, "Construction workers have significantly higher rates of injuries, fatalities, death by suicide, and overdose deaths than American workers overall. For example, although construction workers are only about 7% of the entire workforce, they were 20% of on-the-job fatalities and 16% of opioid overdoses. The injury rate in construction is 77% higher than the national average. 10% of construction workers use opioid pain medication, and those with work-related injuries were nearly four times as likely to use opioids. Approximately 15% of workers who are prescribed opioids become long-term users, and the death rate due to opioid overdose is six to seven times higher in the construction trades than in any other industry." Medical marijuana is a proven, safe, and effective treatment for managing, as noted, among other things, cancer and remission therapy, anxiety disorders, post-traumatic stress disorder, severe chronic or intractable pain, and opioid use disorder. To exclude the construction industry from this bill would hurt the workers in those industries, putting their jobs at risk should they use legal medical marijuana to treat a serious illness. In addition, if this industry is not forward-thinking on the issue, it will lead young people to choose a different career path at a time when we are desperate to fill skilled positions in the trades, especially here in Pittsburgh. So, what about safety on the job site? There are already a number of high-risk life-or-death vocations here in Pittsburgh where workers are using legal medical marijuana, and they are protected from discrimination. This includes our own Pittsburgh firefighters and paramedics. Given the heightened risk of injury, chronic pain, opioid use disorder, and death faced by construction industry workers, it is especially important that they have these same protections here in Pittsburgh. Workers are already trusted to responsibly use prescription medication and not be impaired at work. Medical marijuana patients should be treated with that same trust. Now to the question of whether this measure would affect costs, building costs in Pittsburgh. Under this bill, any employer operating in the city of Pittsburgh can test medical marijuana patients for suspected impairment at work or, in the case of an accident. If the patient tests positive for marijuana, that employer could choose, choose, to administer an additional blood test to determine if blood levels of THC exceed the 10 nanograms per milliliter limit for performing certain tasks, as detailed in the Pennsylvania law. The employer could also choose not to do further testing based on an evaluation of the situation and the fact that the worker holds a medical marijuana card. Additional testing for medical marijuana patients could potentially increase costs for the employer, but, like many worker protections for safety, health, and wellness, the increased benefit is well worth it. I'll just close in saying that medical marijuana is safe, effective, and legal treatment for a host of serious medical conditions, and there are more than 700,000 medical marijuana cardholders in Pennsylvania. It's time to put an end to employment discrimination for medical marijuana patients, no matter their vocation, here in Pittsburgh. Now, with all of that said, this is a complicated bill. This is a, this would be a major change, especially for our construction industry. So, I am in ongoing discussions with our partners in the industry and also in the trades. So, with that, these are ongoing discussions. I know this, there is support for this, but at the same time, there are major concerns about the implications of the bill. So, I would ask for a two-week hold, and I'm happy to also any other discussion, but that is, I would ask for a two-week hold today.
Second.
He said second.
Sorry.
All those in favor of a two-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Bill will be held for two weeks.
Thanks for working through this.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to new papers, Bill 800.
Bill 800, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with the law firm of Fisher Phillips LLC in connection with issues involving labor disputes at a cost not to exceed $60,000 over one year.
There a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Cale Smith.
Thank you. Can we have someone come to the table for that?
Hello, Deputy City Solicitor.
Hi, Jesse. Thanks for coming to the table. Did we have a briefing on this, or an executive session or anything?
So, we've had a briefing on this before, not last session, but, so essentially to kind of explain, we still have ongoing negotiations with other collective bargaining units, so this is requesting another agreement.
Who are the bargaining units?
I don't know the ones in particular, but I can give that to you. I can give that to you when I get back to the office.
I'll just know who they are and if we are going to have an executive session again, or if we're going to have some additional information. I want to know what I'm voting on. That's all.
So, it's...
I may see what it says, but I want to know...
So, this is really just ongoing general, so it wouldn't be any particular collective...
Oh, it's just in general?
Yeah, it's like in general. So, it wouldn't be any particular collective bargaining unit, but is in our process of continuing negotiations as they continue on. Like, this would, like, having that law firm has been very helpful.
So, I'll abstain today till you give me some idea of what exactly this...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 800, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
One abstention. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome.
That moves us on to Bill 801.
Bill 801, resolution authorizing the execution of quitclaim deeds conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest in and to the city-owned property located at 3133 Bruno Avenue in the 20th Ward of the city, in the city, and designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 42H 293 to City Steps Realty LLC, doing business as Second Chance Property Renovation and Consulting LLC, for $23,000 to be deposited into the three taxing bodies' trust fund account relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 801, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Abstentions? Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 802.
Bill 802, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Noble Mediation LLC for mediation services for an amount not to exceed $8,925 over one year.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 802, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 803.
Bill 803, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Holly Bartlett and her attorney Schwartz Carlton PC for a single payment in 2024 in an amount not to exceed $500,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed... exceed $500,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 804.
Bill 804, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Mark A. Winters for arbitration services for an amount not to exceed $5,306.16 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 808.
Bill 808, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of the Regional Opportunity Center, doing business as Vibrant Pittsburgh, for annual membership dues in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Bill 808, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 809.
Bill 809, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with six organizations to produce arts programming as part of the Funding for the Arts American Rescue Plan Act allocation at a total cost not to exceed $625,000.
Discussion, is that a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you. Could you just, somebody explain to us the process and how people are applying for these?
We have Chief Cornell.
Hi, Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Hi.
So we did two RFPs for this process. This first one that we are discussing now is specifically to, it was a call for artists essentially to have programming exhibits, performances across the city. We did a lot of work, Councilperson Strasburger and Councilman Mosley did a lot of work with art groups over the past year, and we had plenty of meetings before we issued this RFP to see what artists really needed in the city of Pittsburgh and what they were expecting and hoping for from this Funding for the Arts American Rescue Plan line. And after a lot of discussion with them, we took their ideas, synthesized them and came up with two RFPs, and one of them was really to help support artists and their art and have it be publicly accessible. So what we did is we issued an RFP, it was a call for artists. There were several responses, and the final opportunity when it came through the RFP was to award six different groups at various amounts across a variety of disciplines. So there's dance, theater, music, visual art, poetry, you know, literary art, things like that. So it was a full, open RFP.
It was a full, open RFP, but you spoke to the artists first to find out how you can make them qualified?
Not to the people who actually applied.
So none of those people tried?
So we talked to, we talked to the groups to see what sort of opportunities they wanted to have, and then from their, you know, as the Office of Management and Budget worked with law to make sure that the ARPA regulations moved through, then we entered our normal procurement blackout, things were publicly posted and from their responses came in.
I actually have a lot more questions now. Can you give us the copies of the people that responded to the RFPs?
Not until the procurement has fully closed and contracts have been awarded.
Why is that?
That is the standard protocol when we have open procurement.
But it's not when city council asks to see things?
I would go back and confirm with law, but I thought my understanding was we couldn't do that until it was fully done.
I know what law said before, but I'm telling you what they've done in the past. When city, city council's not, we're the same as the mayor's office. We ask for information, we should be getting it, the same as if you would want something. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear.
I can check on that, thank you.
Yeah, but I'm gonna, I'll abstain today, thank you, because I do know Councilwoman Strasburger worked really hard on this, so I don't want to try to throw, I know that you did a lot with the artists to make sure that they were getting the funding that they were also promised. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilperson Charland.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Chief Cornell. So the six organizations, what, what kind of arts programming are they going to provide? What, what all are we looking for from their programs?
Sure, so we left it open, so groups could respond back based on what they felt they need as organizations. So the groups that, that we did choose to fund from the selection committee, the August Wilson African-American Cultural Center, and that would be specifically for some support for the Pittsburgh International Jazz Festival, but also they have a monthly intermission series that's related to getting music out in the community, and then the AW Community Days quarterly. So those were three initiatives, you know, based on their full proposal, we only did a portion of, of their budget request, but that was one of them. For Film Pittsburgh, it would support the 2025 and 2026 Film Festivals within the confines of the ARPA regulations. The Hill Dance Academy Theater had a variety of different options in their proposal, and the group wanted to support the International Association of Blacks in Dance Conference, which is coming in January, and there is specifically one performance that will feature local dance groups. The Organization of Chinese Americans is looking to do a visual art exhibition in line with Lunar New Year. The Pittsburgh CLO, the Civic Light Opera, does their annual Gallery of Heroes tour, so they go to, they're planning on going to all 46 PPS schools for musical theater educational productions, so there will be some support for that. And then Shift Works is working with several other different organizations to, to kind of do residencies and public exhibitions, that would be visual art and literary art.
And, so were the, were the projects decided, or was it allowing organizations to come to you? You kind of set aside that you're going to pick six of them, and they're going to tell you what kind of projects they can do, is that-
It was, it was the latter. So we let the organizations come to us with their proposed events. We did not go into this saying, we will only fund six, we will only fund one, two, three, whatever. It was more of a, let's see what people come to us, come to the city proposing, and then how do we make sure that we have a variety of media and different organizations and really things that can get a good number of artists impacted in the city. And we also made sure that everything will be open to the public, and that was one of the, the conditions of this as well.
All right, uh, thank you.
Further discussion? Well, I really want to thank you, Chief Cornell, and Kristin Erickson from the Law Department for your work on this and helping shepherd this through, this and the next bill, you know, it was a, it was a long process. When, when there was $2 million that was allocated to artists through the American Rescue Plan, you know, the easy, by far, the easiest way to spend that money is through city program events and, you know, putting that through the city per all of the really convoluted ARPA regulations for artists that we, as a city, hire for city-sponsored events. But we didn't want to do it that way solely, some of the money did get funneled that way, but we didn't want to do that because that then cuts down on the diversity of, of spending for artists, and the, and the true purpose of, of this initially was artists struggled through COVID, they weren't able to perform, they weren't able to make an income, they were struggling to pay rent, like we saw from groups like the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council, the studies that showed how much artists struggled of all sorts throughout the city. And so the, the aim here was to really listen to arts groups who are the representative of different kinds of artists, so a lot of different types of arts groups who have the numbers, who have the data and have, you know, are the, are sort of the mouthpiece for a lot of different artists. Will they represent every single artist, artist in the city? Absolutely not. Will there be 100% agreement on, you know, that these two types of bills are the best way? Absolutely not. But what we heard loud and clear was, we wanted two different types of RFPs. We wanted one that would allow for the actual, like, funding of production of arts and a different one that would be mini grants to artists to help them recover from COVID, recover from, not from COVID, but, not from the illness of COVID, but from the economic impacts of the pandemic. So, um, that's what this, that's what these two bills seem to do. I know we're still on the first one, but I just wanted to kind of remind people of that, of that process. Councilman Mosley was, was in this process lockstep from before he was a member of city council and then as his new role on city council as well. And I'm really excited to see this move forward and get, and put in place before, you know, the deadline at the end of 2024, so these can be expended beyond that.
May I add one more comment? I'm really excited to see, you know, like you said, the split between these two opportunities. I, I think it's a testament to the artist community that they, you know, are resilient and wanted to put the money back into their work instead of just receiving funds from the get-go. They really wanted to turn this into something more creative and a new opportunity to kind of grow forward, and we're hoping we can think about this moving into the future.
Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, uh, you know, first and foremost, I want to thank Councilperson Strasburger for pulling me into the process and getting me up to speed and for your leadership, you know, and working through, you know, some of the, the anxiety and concern that the artist community had and making sure that these funds, you know, got actually to artists and arts organizations who have struggled through the pandemic and, you know, and not only just, you know, supporting artists economically, but like you said, you know, the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council, you know, has been, you know, you know, really focused on emphasizing, you know, not only, you know, the role that these resources play in, in creating a living for artists, but, you know, also the economic impact for our region, you know, how it enhances, you know, our region's economy, you know, by having a thriving arts community and enriches the lives of so many people who aren't artists but just, you know, enjoy the arts and consume, you know, the incredible art, you know, that, you know, Pittsburghers, you know, present, you know, to the greater community. So, you know, I'm proud to be a part of it, you know, I came in, you know, out of the bullpen late in the game, so I can't take as much credit as our starting pitcher, but, uh, you know, I'm, you know, really excited to see this moving forward and thank, you know, the administration for the role you played as well, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to my colleague, Councilperson Strasburger, for your leadership and, and being a great mentor and pulling me in and getting me up to speed on this process, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion, second round, Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you. I just want to say, I am glad that you did the RFP process, because I don't want you to think that I didn't hear you say that. I'm glad that you did that. And, and I'm thankful that Councilwoman Strasburger made sure that the artists were included in this funding, because they were initially promised this with Mayor Paduta was in office. And I don't know if, did they ever identify then artists that should receive the funding? Do you know?
The structure of it was not fully set in stone. It went through many iterations. It was, you know, originally going to be routing to the URA, and then it was back, and then it, it never fully solidified.
Okay. I just wasn't sure where it went and who had it and what happened, you know, whether, I didn't know where it stopped. That's it, okay. All right, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 809, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 810.
Bill 810, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Casey Droge Cultural Productions for professional services relating to the administration and management of a program to disperse American Rescue Plan Act funds to support local artists impact, impacted by COVID-19 at a cost not to exceed $160,000.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 810, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 811.
Thank you.
Bill 811, resolution, amending Resolution 92 of 2019 to provide for the extension of a professional services agreement by a term of one year with Dickey, McCamey and Chillcoat for costs associated with the provision of legal services for the city comptroller's office at no additional cost beyond the original not-to-exceed amount of $30,000.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 811, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 826.
Bill 826, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title V, Traffic Article VII, Parking, Chapter 543, Parking Meters, Section 543.01, Parking Meter Zones and Rates by creating a meter zone and a meter rate for Hazelwood Green in Chapter 543.01, Section B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Briefly discuss, so it's been posted that parking is paid on the Hazelwood Green, but it, there's, you know, it hasn't been, so now it will be for real. That's, that's the long and the short of it, I think, so.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 826, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
Am I the only one?
That moves us on to invoices. We have a motion for invoices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Invoices are approved. That moves us on to intra-depart, intra-departmental transfers. We have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of intra-departmental transfers, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I'm abstaining, I didn't have a chance to really look through these, I apologize.
One abstention.
Madam Chair, I apologize during this point of order. The, could the chair or the clerk remind me if our rules on invoices say up to $5,000 and inclusive of $5,000? So is it, if it's $5,000, it's not okay? And the, or if it's-
It's $4,999, I think, right?
It's up to $5,000 for one purchase.
So $5,000 is not okay?
Correct, and thank you for pointing this out.
And so there's a comptroller's office invoice for ZEO Technologies, the open book development for $5,000 on the invoices. Does someone want to speak to that? Do we have to, like, motion to reconsider or something?
So let's, motion-
Motion to reconsider the invoices.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then, just to also add on to that, thank you for bringing up that one, we also had a note, and this is my fault for missing this, that Department of Finance had multiple invoices to the Master's Touch that total over $5,000 that we also need to waive the rules for. So it sounds like two different ones to waive the rules. But if someone, if someone has, is their director of-
Okay, got it.
Our council budget director have a, any information on, yes?
Hi, Peter McDevitt, Council Budget Director. Sorry, did you need to know about ZEO or the Master's Touch?
I'm gonna start with CEO first.
Um, I do know that we've made regular payments because they aren't currently under a contract, but I believe this is for a quarterly payment for them to keep Open Book running their, their online platform to track all of our contracts.
There's a bit of a, a loop here, right? So this is the, there's no contract-
Yeah.
-for the technology-
Yeah.
-that keeps track of our contracts.
Yeah.
Okay, just, okay, so I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And now, shouldn't there be a contract?
Ideally, yes.
For the software to keep track of our contracts?
Yeah.
And then, so who, since the comptroller's office is in effect a different body of government, is, whose job is it to put under contract the software for keeping track of our contracts?
I mean, it, it should work like any other department, that they would work with procurement to go through a process to get them under contract, or with the law department to get them under contract if they would be, like, if they would need a waiver as a sole source.
So do you, just happen to know how long the comptroller's office hasn't had this contract?
We've been seeing them, because we had to waive rules a few months ago for these, I think it's been about a year. They were playing catch-up earlier this year to, to put these through. I'm happy to work with them-
Who's they?
The comptroller's office. I'm happy to work with them to try and get this, to encourage them to get it under a contract, so these don't continue to come up as explanatory's.
Absolutely. Like, on one time, I, I'm always happy to refer people to the open book, right? I use it myself in the council office, I, you know, I think it's really great- I, you know, I think it's really great that we have contracts, cooperative agreements, all kinds of things that if people at the city have signed off on them, they are supposed to be there. And so it's a really robust public service, and so I wouldn't want it to go offline. But also, there's a little bit of irony here that the contract, it's not itself under contract. So I don't know if anyone else has any questions, but thank you for having the information.
I see Councilman Wilson's hand up, so I'm going to say Councilman Wilson followed by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to know, for our budget director, do you know what the total cost is of the service?
I would have to, I would have to double check that. I'd have to go back and actually look at the fiscal invoice, which is currently in my office.
How often does this show up?
I believe once, once a quarter.
Once a quarter?
Every three months.
Per 5,000? I'm sorry, do you have to know, like, per 5,000 roughly?
I, I would need to pull the invoice from my office.
All right. I'll follow up with you after me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I don't think I better talk. I don't know if I want to talk because I think this is like, not irony, it's actually not okay, that this is our controller's office, and we're not even sure that it's online currently. So Councilman Charlin's checking now. So thank you, Councilwoman Gross for checking this. But I want to make sure that we're not, I don't think, obviously not moving forward, I don't want to move any money, but we're not even sure we're moving it for something that's even working right now. And the total is what I need to know, too. Yeah, what is the total cost?
So what is the, we have, we can make a motion to waive or we can strike it?
Strike it. Motion to strike.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of striking?
It's a shame because the Controller's Office was just here, too. We could have talked to Doug.
ZEO, from the invoices. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. This one has been stricken from the record or from the invoices. We still do need to waive the rules for the two finance department expenditures that exceed $5,000. And if we would like our council budget director.
So those ones, we can, if you want Director Gula, I can't invite you, they have to invite you.
Director Gula, would you like to join us?
But those are, they're for separate units within the Department of Finance, so it wasn't them splitting two invoices to get under $5,000, but there are also specialty envelopes that Director Gula can give you more information about that aren't on contract.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jen Gula, I'm the Finance Director and City Treasurer. So we do, we did do a bid process for Master's Touch. They used to not, we have special color-coded envelopes that tell us basically which ones are real estate, which ones are the different types of tax payments that we receive in. It kind of helps us to be able to manage the mail and process them through based on, like, due dates, if there were to be a backlog that we could pull out the color-coded ones that we know go first and enter those through. In the past, Master's Touch didn't charge us a different rate for color-coded envelopes, and then they decided that they would, which is not necessarily on or part of the current contract. So they submitted two different invoices to us, one for the business tax envelopes, one for the real estate envelopes, which together equal 6,000 some dollars. At the end of the year, we're actually putting this back out to bid, so these things will be actually part of the new bid structure, and so we won't have this problem going forward.
Okay, but they just changed the contract, scope of the contract in the middle of the contract?
Basically, yes.
And we just let them go with it?
Mostly because, we, really, we didn't know.
Okay. I'm gonna shut up, but I hope they don't get the contract next time if that's, if that's the way they're going to do business with us.
Well, we utilize a vendor performance form, and so then those things go back to procurement whenever we actually do go out to rebid, so.
Doesn't sound right. Yeah, it definitely does not sound right. Doesn't sound okay. All right, but, that's it. I don't even know what to say. That's it for me, but I'm not okay with it, to be honest with you. I'm not okay with giving somebody, I think we should have pursued it a little bit, but I know that you are saying you didn't have a chance.
Do we have a motion to waive the rules?
Not for me.
Motion to waive the rules?
Second.
All those in favor of waiving the rules for the exceedance of $5,000, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. And one abstention, abstentions opposed?
No, I'm just okay, yeah. I'm just not going to make the motion.
Okay. Rules are waived. Let's vote again on invoices. All those in favor of invoices, please, with the ways, rules waived, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Invoices are approved. Thank you so much. That moves us on to P cards. We have a motion on P cards.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion on P cards? I will note, and this has been sent to all members as well, that there was one PayPal transaction, and this was for, through the mayor's office for a DJ for City in the Streets event in Knoxville. We do have the invoice for that transaction in hand.
Do we know where the invoices and who's paying for all the City in the Streets events? What budget, what part that's coming out of the budget? Can we find out?
We can find out, certainly.
Thank you. I don't want to put you on the spot, there was a question, I was just wondering. All of it? Somebody asked me, so I also didn't know the answer.
It's the mayor's office. If there's any further granularity, like, we can certainly find out.
Okay, thank you. And let me see, I think they're a good idea. Before anybody thinks I'm criticizing everybody.
Okay, so all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I can't see that.
Aye. Two noes. P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Deferred Papers, Bill 622, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions by adding Chapter 619A entitled Quality of Life Violations.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Second.
Brief discussion?
Please.
Just a brief discussion here. We're going to have a post-agenda, I believe that it's scheduled October 1st at 2:00 PM. We've been working with community groups and advocacy groups to kind of talk about, sorry, as well as Environmental Services and Public Works as a whole, to make sure that we are creating the strongest bill here that does what we intend it to do. I did want to make a quick comment about one of the remarks that came up during public comment here, and we are listening and, you know, that's helpful, that's the feedback we need to hear. But it is, it's kind of amazing to me, some of the regulations that we take for granted as things that we miss in the communications from Environmental Services. A prime example, this afternoon has been commenting about, wouldn't it be great if the city could provide trashcans to tenants? Well, that is something that is required from your landlord. It is part of city code, it's part of 619. You are required to have a trashcan in the city of Pittsburgh that is part of your landlord's responsibility. And we're, one of the things that we are kind of coming back on over and over again is the communication that comes from Environmental Services and how we need to work better and work as a body to make sure that Environmental Services is able to communicate out some of the things that are happening, not just related to quality of life, but also related to your trash was not picked up because you were in violation of having too heavy of a trashcan, or you left recycling out on the wrong week, and not communicate, you know, our department not doing the job that we need to do to make sure that that information is communicated out to residents so that they understand our, you know, our policies and what is expected here. One of the great suggestions that did come from Caixa San Jose, and we've been able to work with the mayor's office on, has been making sure, and I'm not going to amend the legislation now, amend it in six weeks here, but making sure that the addendum that we require tenants to have in the city that includes their trash responsibilities, making sure that addendum is in their native language, and we believe that we'll be able to translate that for tenants there. So I, you know, appreciate the advocacy that's happened around this, and we'll continue to work forward with it. I want to thank my members for, or members of this body for working with me and kind of bringing up their thoughts and questions, that I know a lot of us are excited to see the city become a cleaner place, and we are, we're going to get there, we just have a little bit more work to do. So I want to thank you very much and for the other members.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, briefly, so thank you for the hold as well, and I do just want to say, as someone who is very dedicated to litter cleanup and trash cleanup in general, to, this ordinance cannot result in just chasing 311s for litter pickup. It cannot be, right? That, that, that won't work, and it will just result in our folks addressing issues where they're least needed, but just where residents are the most vocal. So I appreciate that Councilman Charlin's doing the hold, and then also to make sure that we have with our, with DPW and, and PLI, whether it's DPW or PLI, but that we have a very solid process in place behind this ordinance, ready to roll out, so that we are using the ordinance as a tool to address the problems, you know, with the right people in the right places, as opposed to it being a tool for just residents to, you know, call in about their neighbors. So, anyway, thanks. And I know that Councilman Charlin has that in mind as well, so, and Councilwoman Strasburger. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I did think I asked to be added as a sponsor, co-sponsor of this, so please add me as a co-sponsor. Do you mind?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I just want to say that I listened to the public comment, too. I was actually offended by it because I felt like it was actually discriminatory to people that are immigrants. In my neighborhood, a lot of our immigrants take better care of their yards and their trash and everything than I do. So I think making the assumption that because they're an immigrant, they can't take care of property or follow laws or do things, is actually pretty darn insulting. So I just want to say that. And I think if I had to go back and tell my neighbors that it was said in my community, they would be offended as well, and would have to probably have something to say back. So I just want to say that part, but I also think that would be helpful. I think partly with the problem is, in the city, is there are a lot of things that are culturally different and acceptable that are not always okay here, where, you know, a lot of people do things for their food and do things differently than maybe we would do here, acceptable here. But I said, we used to have, when Fay was here, and I don't remember her last name, but she did something with Mayor Paduta's office, where you could find things in different languages and you knew what you were supposed to be doing in different, but I'm thinking maybe we should just have a QR code on the citations or something where people can just pick the language they want and they can, you know, understand better and understand some of these things. But I think a lot of times what they, what the residents are telling me is that they just don't know. It's not that people don't want to follow things, it's that, you know, they need to know in a way that helps, you know, acclimate them better to, into the neighborhood and to make everyone live more peace, you know, coexist, you know, in the city of Pittsburgh. So I think that, I just want to say that part. I think that we can get to that part. I think there are a lot of people already doing a lot of things and teaching me things about taking care of gardens, which, I grew up on Fifth Avenue, we didn't have a garden, and I'm never going to know how to take care of a garden, but I mean, all of my neighbors that do, so, and the trash and everything else that they do. So I just want to think, I just want to say that I think that we should think about how we, how we're communicating with the influx of people coming in, because it's not just one nationality, it's not just Hispanic, I have, you know, a lot of people from Nepal in my district, a lot of people from Africa in my district. So I think, I think it'd be helpful to make sure that we're reaching all nationalities, that's all.
Much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on Bill 622?
Sorry.
Second round, Councilperson Charlin.
Just very quickly here, as members have brought this up, I think Councilwoman Warwick brings up the excellent point here, that if in our current system, you know, and again, we're not, we're not changing the regulations here, we're changing the process that enforcement happens, but I think Councilwoman Warwick's point is really well taken here, that currently our system is a reactive system. It reacts to you telling on your neighbors. That's, that's how we enforce almost everything in the, in the city, and our goal here is to get away from that by having, being able to do proactive enforcement, so that in the areas like the 14th Ward where more people are more comfortable, you know, calling 311 and making a complaint, that the anti-litter inspectors don't spend their day there and get the opportunity to come, you know, into, into my district where there's, you know, an unbelievable amount of trash, and that is, that is equity, that we can enforce trash where trash is, instead of enforcing it where the complaints are coming from, and that, that's, you know, very much part of our goal here. The other thing, just, that's incredibly important to bring up is, we have the feedback from, you know, from non-native Pittsburghers, and that is a community that we want to welcome here. It is the only, you know, based on a lot of things, Pittsburgh population continues to decrease, the non-natives are the only area of the population that continues to grow, and we want to encourage them and invite them in as best we can. And we also want them to have a clean place to live while they live here. All of the things that we've talked about, about how trash on your street increases cortisol, increases violence, and increases all the other bad outcomes of trash and living in a dirty neighborhood, we also want to make sure our, something that our non-natives get to experience as well, and want them to have the best experience for however along there in Pittsburgh, hopefully forever, because we need the population growth. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a six, six-week hold? Six-week hold for Bill 622, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for six weeks. Bill 792.
Bill 792, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions by adding Chapter 625 entitled Automated Red Light Enforcement Systems.
Discussion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. With discussion? Thank you. Well, I want to, I want to thank everyone for, those of you who have expressed your support or asked questions, worked to further improve this, fellow co-sponsor, Councilperson Warwick as well, and I really, I think that, you know, most of the, the bill is self-explanatory. But just to kind of address some of the biggest concerns I've heard, whether it's in person or whether it's folks who are assuming the bill does something and posting about it online, I wanted to address some of those. First is that this, the misnomer that this bill would be a money grab for the city and that the police would use it as a way to just get money for our general fund. And that's just actually not even, not only is it not in the bill, it's not allowed under state law. State law says that any funds that are collected through this, minus operating expenses, must go to PennDOT for the, PennDOT's Motor License Fund for its, the program that would then be granted back to cities for road safety and intersection improvements. Pittsburgh has actually been the beneficiary of that fund from other red light camera cities, other red light camera programs in other cities like Philadelphia. And so it does help statewide, but we get priority. So for instance, in Philadelphia, which has this program in place, in 2023, it received $7 million in transportation safety grants, which is about half of its 14 million, 7.7 million dollars. million dollars in remittance to the state. So, would not be a money grab, it is a way to, first and foremost, protect the safety of people who are traveling our streets. Second, that there would be no way to know, or that this would somehow penalize people without them knowing, there's a mandatory, again, per state law, which is included in this, a 60-day warning period at the first location where this will be, with signage, so people will be warned, and then for any subsequent locations, a 30-day warning period. And the signage warning people where it's going to be has to be conspicuously installed. And then, another really important point is that, you know, regarding questions about the technology, or surveillance, really the technology is just designed to go after people who run red lights, or make a turn illegally on a red light, and nothing else. So, and in addition to that, an officer, some sort of officer, a human being must review each and every one before they're mailed. There will be a way to contest, but hopefully, what we've seen in other cities is that when there's a human involved, and actually reviewing it, not there on site, you know, we're avoiding the human-to-human, sort of pulling someone over for someone who's run a red light, which doesn't often happen, but when it does happen, it can result in, you know, a dangerous situation, and a situation that goes, blows out of proportion in general, like, it avoids that, but it does bring the human level into it for reviewing each and every photo. And then fines are capped at $100. So, I think those are the most important parts of it. Really, I'll just end by saying, thank you. Thank you to every single person who spoke today, thank you to all of the different complete streets organizations, from, you know, Complete Streets Pitt, to Complete Streets for all the different neighborhoods out there, and committees out there, Bike Pittsburgh, Mobilify, AARP, every single group that's really voiced support for this, I really appreciate you, and the, you know, the emotional stories that you've told about, anecdotes you've told about why this is important to you and your family. So, I will leave it there, and...
May I, I'm sorry to interrupt, may I register i-votes for the remaining bills? I'm sorry, I have a conflict.
So noted.
Make sure, I want to have an i-vote on this one.
Thank you, so noted, thank you. So, with that, thank you, and further discussion, Councilwoman Kelsmith.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say that I'm glad that you're looking at some other ways, and I know this came up before, and I can't remember all the details back then, and I'm certain that they're straightened out now at this point, but I remember, I recall at one point it stopped because people have a right to face their accusers, and a camera's on an accuser, so I don't know how they work through that. I think that they did, but if we can get some information on that, I'd appreciate that. But I also want to know how it will address funerals, because they often run red lights, and, you know, go through, so, I've gotten some calls from people from funeral homes, actually, asking about that, so I'd like to know that. And I'm glad that we're looking at something different, because I'm seeing the city of Pittsburgh turn into speed bumps all over the place, and they're now not working everywhere either, you know, and so I just think we need to do something different. But I do think enforcement, it has to be part of every component, because it's just not working the way it is. I mean, people, on Grandview Avenue, every single night almost, and Noblesstown Road, and then Sharon, and there's just, where people are doing burnouts, and, you know, just totally ignoring the speed, they use the speed bumps for jumps, and so I think it's getting to be like, and Domi is overloaded with the requests that they have for traffic calming. So, at some point, there has to be a combination of enforcement, and all the other efforts, you know, together, but I think it's coming together, and seeing what is working and what isn't, because I said, God, when I was young, it was cobblestone roads, and nobody was speeding back then. We had cobblestone roads, and streetcars tracked down the middle of Fifth Avenue, that's where, that's how I grew up. We rode our bikes down Robinson Street, onto Fifth Avenue with no helmet, flip-flops, and onto cobblestone, and guess what? We survived. But I think it was because it was cobblestone road, nobody was speeding. But I just, I'm concerned about what's happening right now, to be honest with you, in our traffic, and seeing people on bikes, and pedestrians, and even vehicle accidents that we're seeing all over the place, it's really getting concerning, and it feels like it's so out of control right now. But I think we have to also address this, the, all those things, but including these burnouts, and the speeding that they're doing. On Grandview Avenue, they took out a utility pool, you know, that could kill somebody, somebody's going to go over a hillside, there's all kinds of things that are wrong with all of this, and I just think we need to take it all seriously. So, I'm thankful that you're looking into more ways to do, to address this, but I think it has to be a combination, a combination of things, and see what works and what's not working. In some areas, something might work, in some areas it might not, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin.
So, very quickly, thankful for this legislation, I think it's a great idea. I want to make clear, I was, and what the record to show, I was going to be very supportive of this, but when my intern Marion advocated for it, now I'm even more, more on board here, and want to make sure that she knows, and she could put on a resume, that she convinced me to support something that I would have otherwise supported. But I do share, Councilperson Kelsmith's concerns here, that we, you know, this is one other step that's really important and really needed. We need more, and more, and more, and more traffic calming, and really outside-of-the-bucks thinking on our traffic calming. Yesterday, my chief of staff and I were in Glassport to check out a, someone who's looking to bring a shelter into our district, and their traffic calming program is leaps and bounds above ours, and, you know, we need, what we can do to think about other ways to try to fulfill all of these requests that we're seeing, that we don't have answers for. So, I want to commend you on, you know, on the work here, and look forward to seeing one step closer to vision zero.
Yeah. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, just briefly, so, because, Councilwoman, you mentioned the Facebook comments, and, you know, we have recently got some traffic calming in Greenfield, and there's lots of Facebook comments, just so, you know, for the folks that are shaking their fists at, you know, all the money, that all the money, oh, I know, but there's nonetheless, you know, all the money we're spending, oops, all the money we're spending on these speed humps and whatnot, you know, we wouldn't have to spend that kind of money if people would just drive safely. And anybody who is complaining about the speed humps, because they mess up their, whatever their complaint, it's, you are driving too fast. Those speed humps would not be, you know, speed humps, or whatever it is, would not be making you nervous when you drive, if you were driving safely. And so, I really do, you know, the folks can get very, very vocal in opposition to things like this, and so I commend the councilwoman, this council, the administration, for just, you know, Domi and whatnot, for just staying the course, and doing what is right, right? Doing what needs to be done, and quite frankly, what we wouldn't need to do if people were, you know, taking others into account, and recognizing that we live in a city, we live in a busy city with all kinds of different people, and all kinds of folks using our road, and that the roads do not belong to cars, they belong to people, and those people are all of us, so, that's all, thanks.
Further discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, just very briefly, again, I want to thank you, and Councilperson Warwick, on your leadership in introducing, you know, this legislation, as I mentioned, at the end of our regular meeting this morning, I spoke at a vigil last night for young Courtney, who we lost in Homewood, who was riding her bike, and was killed by a motorist, which underscores that over the last decade, you know, we've seen an uptick in these incidents, and we know that, you know, you know, speed bumps, and traffic officers, and, you know, I mean, you know, we wish, you know, we could have, you know, officer on every corner, and, yeah, I'm sure everyone, you know, wants a speed hump, you know, on their street, you know, but ultimately, you know, all these tools, you know, in this toolbox, you know, require a certain level of behavior modification, you know, and that's, you know, one thing that, you know, I think we really need to figure out, and I think that's what my esteemed colleague, you know, Councilperson Charlin alludes to, you know, in his comments, is surely trying to figure out a way to change people's behavior, and unfortunately, you know, when we have these tragedies, like losing a nine-year-old, you know, girl just trying to have, enjoy a late summer afternoon on her bikes, and loses her life, you know, it really centers, you know, our conversation again, again, is how we think about ourselves as a city, as my esteemed colleague, Councilperson Warwick talks about, is, you know, we can't have, you know, a city that's solely centered around motorists who are operating automobiles, you know, we have to be a city of those who are walkers, who are bikers, folks using motorized vehicles, because they may be physically challenged, and et cetera, and I think, you know, our city will not be the best version of itself until, you know, we make it safe for every mode of transit that human beings take to move around the city, you know, safely, and, you know, and I'm truly, you know, committed to preventing the type of tragedies that we had two weeks ago in Homewood, and, you know, just being, you know, with the Carter family over the past couple days, and I thank them for their graciousness and their willingness to bring the community, you know, into their family, and help grieve with them, you know, in this unspeakable, you know, tragedy that they're experiencing, and again, I ask, you know, not only, you know, the entire Homewood community, but the entire city to wrap your arms around the Carter family, you know, as they deal with that unspeakable horror, you know, but I do thank you on taking one step, and Councilperson Warwick, on taking a key step to, you know, make our streets safer, I know this is just one tool in the toolbox, and we have a long way to go to make our city safer.
Thank you. Councilman, Council President LeBeau.
Thank you. To, excuse me, to Councilman Mosley's point about the various ways we now traverse our city, how will this, or will this at all affect those on scooters, those on mopeds, those bicyclists that also run red lights?
So, it's a good question, it's a little bit convoluted, because it will catch anyone who is considered a motorist, which I believe, if I'm correct, and someone can correct me later if I'm wrong, but, you know, anyone who's operating any kind of vehicle, and then includes a bike, will be caught by the camera, and if there is a way to ticket them, because there's a license plate, they will be ticketed. Currently, it would be up to state code to require bicyclists to have licenses, you know, or a license plate to then be able to be ticketed in this way.
Okay, thank you.
That would not stop our own enforcement staff from doing what they already do, which is ticket, you know, any moving vehicle, or anyone who chooses to run a red light in any mode. It's just that the automated red light would not necessarily, would be focused on anything with a, you know, that a camera can catch.
Understood. I thought that was the answer, just wanted to be on record asking. But this would then allow us to catch many of our Port Authority buses that frequently jump red lights, and/or run red lights, and enter the intersections intentionally.
If the bus has a license plate, it will not be treated any different under the law.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, thank you all for your questions, and your comments, and your support, thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 792, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to new papers.
Bill 795, resolution authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center for the purchase of pharmaceutical supplies, medications, and related support services necessary for the daily operations of the city's Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, at an overall cost not to exceed $275,000 over five years.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 795, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 796.
Bill 796, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with FMD Architecture LLC, doing business as Shelter Planners of America, to conduct a study of the feasibility of the city owning and operating its own animal shelter, at a total cost not to exceed $49,400 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, second with discussion.
With discussion, Councilwoman Kelsmith.
Thank you. Can we have someone come to the table for this? Good afternoon, could you, when you get a second, introduce yourselves for the public?
David Madden, I'm the supervisor of Pittsburgh Animal Care and Control.
Charles Shower, I'm manager of personnel and finance for Public Safety.
Thank you, good afternoon. Now, could you explain a little bit about what this?
Sure.
What you're looking to do.
So, back in 2021, the city controller's office performed, or conducted a performance audit of the Bureau of Animal Care and Control. Amongst their recommendations, well, they were, as part of that, they, it was, they noted that animal control uses a number of contractors as part of their services, for spaniard services, vet services, that sort of thing. So, one of the controller's recommendations was that we conduct this feasibility study to just investigate, because that is a large cost for, devoted to contractors, so they wanted to see if it would be more cost-effective for the city to conduct those processes on our own. So, we RFP'd for this service, FMD Architects was the winner, we believe that they'll be able to provide both a cost-effective and short timeframe of service to produce a report that should hopefully help guide public safety, moving forward, to determine whether this might be something we want to pursue long-term, or if we should continue to work with our contractors.
So, I'm curious, have you had any conversations with council members about this, or has anybody? That you know of?
Well, we did back when we asked for the money for the feasibility study back then, there had been several questions then about why we thought it was necessary, and various things like that.
So, here's the way I'm used to things working. Usually, if you want to do something, the mayor's office talks to members of council, tries to get some idea of whether there's going to be some support, what we need to do to get the community on board, to work with everyone, and then we go do something like this. So, I'm kind of, I feel like we're putting the cart before the, well, we're talking about animals, but, but, and it's not that I'm, not that I'm opposed, because I actually think that there needs to be more streamlined efforts across the board with a lot of things, just wondering a little bit more about this, and why we're doing this study before having conversations, and explaining the need for it, because, I mean, we do have stuff with humane, it was...
Humane Animal Rescue.
Yeah, and that's over in Homewood, correct?
They have two locations, one on Homewood, and one on the north side of town, yes.
And they, we just spent a lot of money building the one in Homewood, did we add any additional dollars to that, do you know?
No, the one in Homewood, that was all their own money. When they took over Western Pennsylvania Humane Society, they created their north-side shelter, and they built a brand-new shelter on the east side of town. We didn't give them any money for that.
And what do you hope that this shelter will do differently?
This shelter, we're hoping will help to alleviate a lot of, a lot of things they're running into. Right now, they're running into a huge population, where they, we have a contract with them to take in our stray animals, but a lot of times, that stops them from being able to accept animals from other residents within the city of Pittsburgh. They simply run out of space.
So, we have a lot of people that have been meeting with council members, and they do a lot of trapping, or they do a lot of animal rights activists, and they're having a lot of concerns about what we're doing currently, and I'm really not, I want to be honest, I'm not real, you know, informed about what they're doing with animals, or what we're, you know, we're not doing, but I do know that there's a lot of people that do stuff with cats, feral cats, and they came and met with Councilman Coghill, myself, and some other council members, I believe, but they're not happy with the city and the way we're handling that, and, but I did talk to Director Schmidt, and I think at the time, I felt a little bit more comfortable after I talked with him, but that he was going to be, you know, more engaging to the public a little bit. I'm just not sure about this, that's all. I'm just, I feel like we're trying, we should have some conversations, it's like shocking to me that we're all of a sudden having this conversation about us opening, this is serious, of having our own animal shelter. That's like, we've also had recommendations to have our own asphalt plant, are we doing that? You know, so I'm just saying, all of a sudden, we're just going to see something on the table, on the agenda, that we're going to have our own asphalt plant, and we're doing a study, or whatever, without having a conversation. I just feel like we should have some kind of conversations. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, I will say, we've had some meetings recently, so with our lack of an animal shelter, in one case in my district that I in one, one case in my district that I can say is that a few months ago, we had a situation of a dangerous dog. And when I say a dangerous dog, I mean horrific injuries caused by this dog that was in the, just in the neighborhood and kept getting out and get, you know, and we were unable to take this dog because we don't have anywhere, well, we didn't have anywhere, you know, we didn't, we can't force another organization. And I know this stuff doesn't happen every day, but I think I'm glad that we are at least looking into, because, I mean, the, you know, there are so many animals in Pittsburgh and our animal control team is incredibly small and trying to deal with situations like this, you know, and this dog was a dog that was getting out over and over and over and over again. And, you know, if we had somewhere where we, if we had a more robust way to enforce and manage situations like this, we would not have had. I mean, the owner ultimately ended up putting this dog down of their own volition, right? But it was terrorizing the neighborhood. I mean, quite literally terrorizing the neighborhood. I had a daycare that was not letting their kids go out and play, like in the back of the, in the yard of the daycare. That's how dangerous this dog was. It was like four different incidences or so of, of really horrific surgery, you know, bites that required surgery. So I'm happy that we're looking at it, you know. I think it is definitely worthwhile exploring. I get it, it is, it's a huge endeavor and where, would we even put it? I don't know. But, you know, it's, I think it's worth exploring, given the amount of wildlife and strays and dogs and whatnot that we have in, in the city and the amount of, you know, it's one of the biggest things that comes up at community meetings is dealing with, you know, with animals. So, anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Mosley?
Is there a sense of how long the study is going to take?
Their proposal was for approximately 13 weeks.
Okay.
Of course, that's contingent on when the contract can be executed and when they're able to complete their research. But I think it's certainly reasonable that we'd be able to have something approximately that timeframe.
And I'm sure, you know, the study will reveal more details, but based on, you know, your, your expertise, do you have a general ballpark sense of how much shelter space additionally this, the city needs based on, you know, the current shortage that you laid out in your earlier remarks?
Very good question. Probably be looking at a minimum of 100 to 150 dog kennels and probably almost an equal number of cat cages at a minimum. For other animals, I mean, we do get in, everybody here knows, we do get in other animals. We get in chickens and roosters and goats and rabbits and things like that. And of course, a few years back, we had, you know, alligators.
Okay.
So, you know, specialized cages and stuff like that, we definitely could look into. But we have definitely seen an increase over the last probably year and a half in the number of dogs alone that we are taking to Humane Animal Rescue. We're actually probably close to 70 dogs a month. That's just from us, you know. They have other, other residents who can't care for their dogs anymore for whatever reason, so they have to give them up. Sometimes they'll expand and go out and help other communities that do not have animal care and control services or a shelter. So they'll go out and help them. And then they have to put all that on hold because we're still bringing in 70 dogs a month. And also the redemption rate for owners to go in and reclaim their dogs ever since COVID pretty much ended has really dropped off the map. During COVID, 50, 60, even 70% of owners that have lost their dogs were going back in to reclaim them from the shelter. But since that time, the most we've ever had right now was probably 40%. It's down mainly into the low 20s, maybe mid 20s percent. So out of 70 dogs, we take them, you know, more than half are staying inside the shelter. And then the next month, we're bringing them 70 more dogs.
Right. And when you say reclaim, you know, is it, is it folks actively coming back for the dog? Or are you getting in touch with the owner and letting them know that you found the dog?
It's a combination of things, really. It's the owners actively looking for their dogs and they're calling us and we're saying, yeah, we picked up your dog running loose down in Lawrenceville. You have to go to the shelter to reclaim it. A lot, a lot more dogs nowadays have microchips so those can be traced, the owners can be contacted. Most of the dogs we pick up in the city of Pittsburgh are not wearing collars, so they're not going to have licenses or rabies tags that can be traced. So it's really microchips, but it's the owners themselves, you know, they're going on Facebook, they're going on nextdoor.com, they're calling us, they're calling the shelter, really trying actively to look for their dogs.
So you're saying there's instances where you, you know, you determine who's the owner of the dog, contact the owner, and they're still not?
Yes, it does happen.
And they're still not reclaiming?
Yeah, they, you know, for whatever reason, maybe, you know, maybe the dog did get loose and they just figured, you know, well, we were going to move anyway and wherever we were going to move wouldn't accept the dog, so we're not coming down to reclaim the dog. What they'll do for the shelter is, we'll either go down to the shelter and do something called owner release or owner surrender the dog, or they can do that. I believe they do allow it for them to do it over the phone as long as they can verify who it is.
And then you said additional 150 cages?
Yeah, that's what I would be thinking.
And what's the current inventory between the north side and the Homewood?
I really couldn't tell you. All I can tell you for sure is that when they built their new shelter from the old Animal Rescue League, they actually cut down the number of kennels because, of course, they were opening up a north side shelter. But I don't know the actual capacity. I haven't been to the new shelter myself since they first built it, and that was, you know, five years ago. But, you know, they do a fantastic job for us, without a doubt. They've been doing it for years. It's just that they are being swamped, just like we are.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let's see, second round. Any further for first round?
You first.
I, may I?
I'm asking the chair.
Councilperson Charlotte.
So just quickly, you're, what we're proposing here, this is the feasibility for the building, right? This is not for actually operating, becoming accredited, and the operational costs that will be associated with running a shelter.
No, this actually does include some of those additional costs.
This includes all of that, so we could find out how much out the door it would cost for us. Because, you know, building a building is really challenging for us too, but then also figuring out how we're going to scale up services and how we'll be able to do that in the coming years of austerity, how we can manage, you know, doing this program. I will be honest with you, Animal Care, of the services that we contract out that I would like to see brought in-house, having our own shelters is certainly not on the top of my list. And there is a pretty large cost associated with us even finding out how much that would cost. So I, you know, do want to know i- if this is really a road we're serious about going down, why, why we're choosing to do the shelter instead of doing the asphalt plant or a variety of other things I think we, we should be looking at bringing in-house. So, you know, I guess that's what, what this money will be allocated for, so.
Also, just to let you know, we're not anticipating any problems or anything like that. But, you know, right now, our relationship with HAR is fantastic and it has been for a number of years and we hope it continues forever. But we can't, you know, really predict that. If they, for whatever reason, decided they couldn't do it anymore, we have no other place to take all these animals. We don't. There's no other shelter that can handle the volume that they handle. The only one even close would be Animal Friends. And we already checked with them, at least earlier on in the, in the process, and they said they're, they keep their shelter at like 94% capacity as it is. There's no way they can handle the volume of animals we take in, in the city of Pittsburgh on an annual basis.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Second round, Councilwoman Kelsmith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, is there a county shelter?
No, there is no Allegheny County wide Animal Care and Control. So there are no county shelters.
So I wouldn't mind if this was something that we're going to talk, if there's, I'm going to wait till next week until you maybe get me some more information, you know, I'll abstain today. But what I'd like to know is if there's any plans to talk to other people so we can also service. So my district, we border the most boroughs. Animals don't know what borough, what neighborhood they're in, okay? So they come over to our side, you know, vice versa all the time. I know some of them are struggling with their animal care and control as well. So I would like for us to have some conversations with the boroughs around us to see if there's some way we can service, you know, Allegheny County, not just the city. Then I wouldn't mind spending money on something, if we're doing something, you know, more comprehensive, that's all. Thank you. I'll wait for the response after, after you talk to Director Schmidt and see if he has any conversations going on there. But I do want to thank Animal Care and Control because you do a great job with a very small staff and a very small budget. So I want to thank you all for the, for the prompt responses you give us all the time. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any further discussion? Second round? I do have a question here. Are we, would we be planning to also operate veterinary services? Or would this really just be a holding shelter?
No, I think at some point we'd have to, you know, entertain, entertain the possibility, really, really, probably true possibility of actually having vet services. Because right now, we actually do have a verbal contract with Blue Pearl, PBSCC, to take in the animals that HAR can no longer treat for either injuries and or illnesses. And we are spending money taking them there and having them being treated. It's a fantastic place. They get the best top tier treatment, but it does cost a lot of money for us to do that. So having a vet actually work at the shelter would really help out. And it would also help out with the spay neuter program.
I have a lot of questions. I will, I will vote for this today, but as we, as we go down this road and explore it further, I have some questions about what this is, what the, what the plan, what we think the plan will be here. I know that the money is to pay for the plan, but, and why we're, and really why we're embarking on this. But I will vote for this today with the hope that questions can be answered soon. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 796, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Abstain.
One abstention?
Abstain.
Two abstentions? Affirmative recommenda-, affirmative recommendation. That moves us, thank you very much. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
New papers, Bill 812, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a utility easement agreement or agreements with Crown Castle Inc. to access, excavate, bore, and install fiber internet connectivity infrastructure under, across, and over city-owned property located at Pittsburgh EMS Medic III, Police Zone 6, 312, 312 to 320, South Main Street, block and lot numbers 6A97 and 6A99 at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 812, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 813.
Bill 813, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a utility easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company to install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew, and finally remove five poles and one anchor to pole located on city-owned property, lot and block number 119B300, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Just brief discussion. I just do, I want to say I noticed that there's a lot of the utility pools are looking pretty bad. And I'm hoping that maybe we can have a conversation with them about their maintenance in the city of Pittsburgh, because I don't see it in the suburbs, you know, around us. I do see it all in the city. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 813, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 814.
Bill 814, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of Public Works, and director of Finance to enter into agreements with Duquesne Light Company for vegetation management on parcel ID 34D20, anchor installation and maintenance on parcel ID 14N258, and pole and anchor installation and maintenance on parcel ID 33A200 at no cost to the city.
Matthew Avenue. Motion to approve?
Second.
I'm just curious where this is. Where's Matthew Avenue?
Matthews is in my district, but not the 34th ward. I'm very curious what's going on here.
Is there someone here? Director, come forward.
Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works. So this in question is related to the Fourth Division project. So in order to bring power to the site, it requires them to access our property and give them the ability to, you know, maintain that in perpetuity.
I would love to see that moving, huh?
Yeah. I'd like to approve it then.
All those in favor say aye. Do you oppose affirmative recommendation, Bill 817?
Bill 817, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's multimodal transportation fund for the Smallman Street Complete Street project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $2,279,662.30 with a local match of $117,100 from the 2024 capital budget for a total grant project cost of $2,396,762.30 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed affirmative recommendation, Bill 818?
Bill 818, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a consent and order agreement and amendments with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, as decreed by the Commonwealth for the city of Pittsburgh, to execute corrective action in solid waste management and provide payment of civil penalties at a city cost not to exceed $28,000 over one year.
Motion to approve? Brief discussion?
Second.
Second discussion?
Yeah.
I thought you were going there. I just, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so go ahead. I just want to explain the situation.
Yes, so the Department of Environmental Protection conducted some inspections of our streets divisions approximately one year ago. And we found that we were in violation of certain state ordinances regarding how we handle our municipal trash. In this case, this is like the municipal trash that we collect from city street cans, from parks, from other city facilities, not resident trash. This is strictly like our own trash that we collect from public spaces. What it boils down to is that we were unable to comply with the regulations because the way our divisions are configured requires us to dump the trash onto the ground, in which we come in with a, what we call a high lift, which is a piece of equipment that scoops it up and dumps it into a roll-off container. We have to do this because we do not have compactors at any of our divisions. Also, as part of their inspection, they noted that there were certain divisions that were receiving a significant amount of illegal dumping, either outside their gates or within the gates, uncontrolled. And so part of the consent order is to provide security measures and staffing, dedicate staffing to make sure that we can receive the public and inspect loads before we receive wood waste and recycling. So with that, you'll see later on in the month, there is a proposed capital budget to kind of modify our divisions to put in compactors. So this would allow us to dump directly into a box that's then compacted and covered. So that would comply with state law. This also regulates us to the number of tires that we can have in a division at any one time to 500, which sometimes we exceed. So we need to do a little bit of a better job there as well. So if anyone has any questions?
No.
Did you say we're under a consent decree? Or no?
This is to, you know, accept the, accept consent decree and pay the fine.
Okay. Do we have paperwork to say that we have a fine? Is there stuff you can share with us?
Yes.
Okay. Could you please send that over?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
How often does the DEP, I know you've said that the DEP is actually a very good partner here, but how often do they come and inspect us? It feels like every time they come through, we like lose something.
You know, they, like us, they inspect upon public complaint.
Really?
Yes.
So our residents are saying that our, our divisions are creating too much trash, and they're bringing the DEP in on us? Is that kind of how that works?
Essentially.
Wow. It's kind of wild.
It could be somebody other than a resident.
It could be somebody other than the resident.
Like one of your residents over in the boroughs over there?
Yeah.
You know, it just, it is kind of interesting, because it's like, I have to fight for my life to get the LCE to come and check liquor licenses here from the state. It feels like DEP shows up, and like, all of a sudden, we can't do drop off trash, and now we've got to build some, a structure for...
Yeah, it's just a, it's a compactor. So it's essentially, it's an in-ground pit that will hold the proper container. So, yeah, it is some, there is some work there. It does seem a little bit overwrought. But it is, you know, we worked with them on the rules. You know, they understand our constraints with, you know, accommodating it, because the infrastructure just is not in place. So they understand that it's going to take time. You know, we have to develop a plan. They're going to have to approve that plan. So they've been a good partner. They understand, you know, some of the limitations that we're dealing with. Ultimately, this will lead to, I think, less, you know, less litter, less litter in the divisions, less litter in those neighborhoods next to a division, less litter makes our operation more efficient. Actually, we'll be able to, with the, with the staffing, we'll be able to expand the drop off of recycling to hours that are more convenient to the public. So I think that would be like a really great, that's a really great benefit. So no longer, you know, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday, but we can actually have hours that can accommodate weekend hours and hours later for working folk.
Who, does the DEP fund us to, I mean, when they give us these decrees, is there any sort of funding? Or do they fund us through different ways? I know every so often, we are receiving a DEP grant.
Yeah, they do, they do note like certain grant opportunities that the consent decree would make us a little, maybe a little bit more competitive for things for recycling containers, covered storage, that type of thing. So we work with them on that.
So we pay our fine this way, and then we receive a grant back the other way?
I mean, I can't, I don't think we're going to guarantee that grant, you know, I don't think it works that way. But they do, you know, they have programs, also programs for public outreach. So if we want to expand, you know, outreach to the public about recycling, additional recycling services, you know, that would be part of this as well.
Great, thank you.
I just want to make one more comment. I just wanted to say Sean does a great job. Sean, is it wiggle or waggle?
Wiggle.
Wiggle. Wiggle, waggle, waggle. Okay. I apologize. And I do want to point out that two of the directors live in my district right here, okay? Just want to point that out, next to the boroughs. But anyway, I want to say, he does a great job. He really does. He's, he's so quick. And I don't know how he tolerates it sometimes, because there's not a day goes by, I'm not getting tagged about something, and we send it over to him, or somebody sends it over to him, or other residents even now email him directly. So I think he tries his best, and I think he does a really good job. So I just want to make sure I acknowledge him. And, and the crews that work in our neighborhoods, I think, are, they work so hard, and I just want to acknowledge them, too. But I wish we had somebody to go clean up behind them sometimes. So just say that part. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? That moves us to the Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilwoman Charlotte. We have one new paper, Bill 794.
Bill 794, resolution amending Resolution Number 96 of 2024, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPO-ETC, required assessment and evaluation of public safety candidates, and providing for payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $95,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
I was kind of curious.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation?
I just wanted to call you to the table.
That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Wilson, one deferred paper, Bill 749.
Bill 749, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with our borough for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the home ARP program for a total not to exceed $1,500,000.
Motion to hold for two weeks?
Motion to hold for two weeks. Which committee is this?
It's your committee, Councilwoman. Feel free.
Right now, motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill be held two weeks. That takes us to new papers, Bill 819.
Bill 819, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning code, Article I, introduction and establishment, Section 902.03, zoning map to rezone parcels 83J300, 83K104, and 83K102, from R2M, two-unit residential moderate density, to RMVH, multi-unit residential very high density, and parcels 83J301, 83K48, 83K60, and a portion of 83K61, from RMM, multi-unit residential moderate density, to RMVH, multi-unit residential very high density in the East Liberty neighborhood.
Motion to hold for two weeks, Councilmember.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill be held for cable cast public caring. That takes us to Innovation and Performance, Asset Management and Technology, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross, who have one new paper, Bill 797.
Bill 797, resolution amending Resolution 471 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with CIS, Center for Internet Security, for Albert MD Monitoring Application, which predicts malicious activity on the city network by monitoring, alerting, and analyzing information gathered by sensors by increasing the approved 2024 amount by $38,880, for an amended total cost not to exceed $94,898 over seven years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? That takes us to Intergovernmental Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Mosley. We have one paper, Bill 799. I missed one, sorry.
Yeah, 798.
798, sorry.
Bill 798, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 2,700 Penn Avenue, 6th Ward, Pittsburgh, PA, 15222, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? Now, Bill 799.
Bill 799, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a license agreement with Action Housing Inc., the housing authority of the City of Pittsburgh and the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, in order to allow Action Housing Inc. access to portions of the real estate located at 200 Ross Street to perform limited exploratory demolition as part of a feasibility study for the residential conversion of the property at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I have a lot of discussion, but I'm going to shut up.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation?
Now I'm going to have to talk.
Well, let me do this one thing, then I'll let you talk all you would like. So Councilwoman Schlossberger is not here. However, there's a bill she wanted to bring back to the table today, which is Bill 221 of 2024. It's a bill that rezones a portion of the 7th Ward. She had actually sent it, I believe it was introduced in March, sent over to planning recommendation. They made their recommendation. It came back to us. However, the clock is going to run out soon on our ability to hold a public hearing. Therefore, we need to put it back on the table and extend the life of it so that we can hold the public hearing. We've actually already worked with the Clerk's Office to get it scheduled for October. So if someone would make a motion...
What is the motion?
To lay Bill 2024 221 on the table.
Please lay the bill back on the table.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The bill is back on the table. Now, if someone would offer this motion, which is a motion to consent to an extension on the record for Bill 221 pursuant to Section 922.05 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Could you write that down for me?
It's a memory. I do, no, I haven't written that down.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The bill has been extended. Thank you. Anything from members, Councilwomen?
No, I don't really have anything. I was kidding.
Okay. So we do have meeting announcements. Next week, Council will hold our regular meeting on Tuesday, September 10th at 10:00 AM, and the Standing Committee meeting on Wednesday, September 11th at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM the morning of each meeting. To register for these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the meeting webpage by 9:00 AM, or call the Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138. Then on Tuesday, September 10th at 1:00 PM, Council will hold an executive session. Then on Wednesday, September 11th at 1:30 PM, Council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 706 as relates to naming Bill 458, room, excuse me, 458 in the Sidney County Building as the Tim McNulty Press Room. Speaker registration closes at 12 o'clock. To sign up to speak, contact the Clerk's Office. You can call them at 412-255-2138. Was anyone absent? Call here. We need a motion to excuse the absent member, prove the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.